Good evening and welcome everyone to our education committee meeting of the Board of School Directors. We thank you for your participation this evening and we have a single topic. Agenda, but a very impactful. Or information packed, if you will, subject matter this evening. Again, thank you. We're going to get right into the agenda. And we will have the presentation and answer questions thereafter. Ms. Brown?
Good evening. I wanted to come off of share screen. Good evening. Thank you for joining us as Ms. Cook Henry has already stated. The academic services team would like to present to you the fall data analysis for this particular school year. And I want everyone to keep in mind that we began to shift to K to two does map or a cadence K two does. K two does a cadence math and reading, I'm sorry, and three through 11 grades, three through 11 will do map assessment for math. ELA and science for those particular grade bands that do science. So I want everyone to keep ourselves grounded in this new system because part of our strategic plan, we wanted to make sure that the district had one. Assessment tool for the entire district. So Dr. Lewis will lead us in this conversation, supported with the academic services team.
All right. Thanks, Ms. Brown. Good evening, everybody. So yeah, as Ms. Brown just stated. The assessment data that we're presenting today links to these focus forward strategies. By in the first place, this driven by data approach of using this kind of data to drive instructional decisions in the classroom. And drive resource allocation decisions at the school and the district level. These diagnostics are part of an overall comprehensive assessment system. These are what we usually refer to as our long cycle assessments. These are done three times a year to give us a bigger picture of. Student growth over the year, student needs at different times in the year. This is sort of a bird's eye view, if you will. So I think we just went through two, but I know Ms. Brown already stated what was on the previous slide. That we are going to be talking about a cadence math and reading for grades K through two. And the map assessment for grades three through 11 or three through 12. These contextual questions of the characteristics of both these assessments. We actually drew these drew these questions from our materials that we work with. School instructional teams on. These are the kinds of questions that I'm going to give you some background about tonight so that you can understand. More of the context for the results that we're seeing. When we compare different assessments, we need to know how does this assessment basically work? What kind? What does the score really mean in context? What is being measured here in contrast to another assessment and how do we apply that data? So a cadence reading and math, which you'll probably recall, we used to do just a cadence reading in. Elementaries, we've shifted to include both subject areas and just the primary grades. So the first bullet point states that these are kind of underlying skills and proficiency assessments. They're not so directly tied to standards and content that they. Overlap with the purpose of like a unit test at the completion of. A unit or what we would call a common assessment. They are trying to give teams an understanding of how ready is this student to get core instruction? What kind of supports are they likely to need? How intense are those supports likely to need to be? So that gets into the second point about what the performance levels mean in this context, because we'll be looking at summaries of those levels. So for this assessment in both subject areas, well below benchmark means this is a student likely to need intensive support. Below benchmark is a student likely to need strategic support. Maybe not about everything, maybe not all the time. And at or above benchmark means it's the student is likely to need core support. In essence, what that means is they still need to, you know, be getting high quality tier, tier one instruction, core instruction throughout the entire year. They haven't mastered the content of the grade level, but they should be fine in a core instruction setting. We can go to the next page. Okay, so in contrast, map growth, which is our new assessment this year. For for most grades, the high school, as some will know, was piloting it last year. So MAP is designed to be very sensitive to growth in between testing, testing windows. So it can really be used as a tool for progress monitoring. And the key piece about this is that this is norm referenced, and I'll be breaking down what that means tonight. This means that your result on the map growth test places you in comparison to a very, very large national sample, essentially placing you. Amongst your grade level peers, how many, you know, what does your achievement look like compared to virtually everyone else in the country? And part of how it does that is by being an adaptive test as the third bullet point states. Part of what this means is that I believe the for both math and ELA, the. Grade six and up actually take what MAP considers to be the same test. It's it's a grade six and up test. But it's so adaptive and can go up and down content that it can still place any of those students among their grade level peers. So we can go to the next piece. Okay, so I'm going to further break down that norm reference piece. And talk about some key terms. So the first thing to remember, so we're going to be looking at achievement at a single moment in time today. Because the test is so sensitive to growth, we're excited about what we'll be able to see in the winter. And see, okay, are kids growing like we expect them to? Are there our kids growing in achievement like, you know, their peers would nationally? But right now it's achievement in a single term. The achievement for an individual student, we're we're most interested in how it's expressed in terms of a of a percentile. That's what relates their performance to national norms. As a as a review, you know, a student scoring at the sixty third percentile, that means they scored higher than sixty three percent of all students. If you've visited a pediatrician and gotten a growth chart for a kid, it's the same kind of idea. If your kid is in the sixty third percentile for height, they're taller than sixty three percent of all other kids their age. So, but we just don't have one kid, right? We have a whole grade full of kids, a whole classroom full of kids. So there's another measure called the median percentile that MAP also presents, you'll see, that's the middle percentile. So. If I have, you know, thinking about kids, say, say I have triplets. And one kid is at the fortieth percentile for height. One kid is at the forty third percentile for height, maybe they were eating more of their vegetables. And the third triplet is at the forty eighth percentile for height. That middle number, that forty third percentile, that's my median percentile. I just line them all up in order. I pick the middle one. In in terms of our grades or our classes, any group of students whose results we're looking at. That's like a good representation of the typical kid. If I walk into this classroom and the median percentile is sixty three, that tells me the typical kid, you know, is doing above average. If I go into another classroom and the typical kid is at the thirty third percentile, that tells me the typical student is well below average. So. Just with that single number, we can get a picture of what the needs of a group of students are. We also pay attention to the distribution. Meaning how many lower percentile kids do we have? How many higher percentile kids do we have? How does this spread look? We'll be looking at a visual in just a moment. NWEA breaks these into quintiles. These are just five chunks of percentiles. Where you'll see the red group is the first through twentieth percentile, the the bottom of the distribution. Orange twenty first through fortieth, yellow is right around the middle, forty first to sixtieth. Green sixty first to eightieth and eight greater than eightieth is blue. So. We'll take a look at sort of what that looks like visually, I think, on the next slide, and if you have questions, we'll stop after that. Okay, so. Sometimes when we think of an assessment. We think, well, I, what I would hope is that all kids are scoring really, really high on this assessment. And of course, that's true in theory, but. When you are doing this comparison to national norms. That's not really a reasonable goal or a goal that is is really close by. So if we had a school where. The median percentile was eighty five and everybody was in the green and the blue, and there were even more blue quintile kids than green quintile kids. That would be a school likely to score a hundred percent on the PSSA or Keystone. That's really not a typical school that you see anywhere. So I want to make sure people understand when we look at the distributions, the. The. The sort of ideal outcome is a really extreme kind of case that we're not likely to see anywhere in the country. The second bar shows. A completely typical distribution. That's like if we had a school that contained all students in the country. The median percentile would be exactly in the middle. There would be exactly twenty percent of kids in the bottom quintile, exactly twenty percent in the next, exactly twenty percent in the next. A school with this distribution would have, again, just as many low performing kids as there are nationally. Just as many middle performing kids as there are nationally and just as many high performing kids as there are nationally. So. That is what we use more as a reference point. You'll see some discussion when we break down the grade levels and. Or that's not the great levels, excuse me, the yeah, the great levels and the subject areas. How, you know, we'll point out things like, here's a grade that has more of this bottom distribution or less of this top distribution than the national sample. We kind of compare it to that typical result of twenty percent. As a way of seeing where we have more of a certain category of performance or less of a certain category of performance. So. I'll pause here in case there are any questions about. How we kind of think about these scores on the map since it's a new assessment for all of us. But after this, we'll look at some of the data from William Penn.
Are there questions at this time? Dr. Lewis, I just have one since we we've paused. I've been documenting, there's three times a year. For this and you reference, we did the fall, the winter, one would assume it's the spring. And since this is our first and we're ground getting grounded, this is our baseline data.
Yes. Yes, it's certainly our baseline data and. I want to say not only is it our baseline data for. The the district using this assessment. As the years go on, it'll also be baseline data for individual kids. So this test allows teams to compare across multiple years. A lot of the assessments we use previously, it's kind of like a, well, what's their fall, winter, spring for sixth grade? What's their fall, winter, spring? For seventh grade, it got a little bit dicey when we tried to go one year to the next. But this test will actually allow a continuous comparison over several school years. You know, the third graders who just took it, if they're with us in eleventh grade and we all, we all keep liking map. And we keep using it, they'll have eight years of data from this test.
Thank you. Are there any other question, Ms. Hall?
Uh, thank you, Ms. Cook Henry. I, is there any correlation? I didn't hear you mention test scores and I was sort of grateful, but I'll ask the question anyway. Is there any correlation between? Students' achievement on this and their achievement on a standardized test?
Yes, absolutely. So I think there's probably two pieces to your question. So the first is. They cover the same things, right? They cover the same thing. So. That basic correlation of if you do well, the better you do on the map, the better you do on the PSSA. That is absolutely the case. The correlation is really, really strong, like we would expect from any assessment like this. In addition, there is information we can get from the test about a student's eventual likely proficiency. We are, you know, working with different ways to try to use this. There's also. Prediction, projection data from the state that we receive as part of the P V S releases that sheds light on this. So not only are the are the assessments well correlated in general, but they also give us a clue about individual students. Most likely paths to proficiency.
Thank you. Am I missing hands in? Okay.
And if there were any questions still forming, I think we'll probably clarify them as we look at some of the results. So we can go ahead to the first. So I guess I set myself up, but I'm going to talk about Acadians a little bit first. So some of the Acadians highlights you'll see me talk about as we look at the visuals. In grades K through two and reading about thirty percent of students scored above benchmark in fall twenty twenty three. There are some hotspots that we'll see such as the fact that half of first graders district wide scored well below benchmark. That's again indicating the need for intensive support compared to only about a third of kindergartners and second graders. So we'll look at those grade to grade differences. There's kind of a similar. Callouts here in in mathematics where thirty six percent of grades K through two were at or above benchmark in the fall that gives us a sense of. The the baseline level of need that we're coming into. And again, about half of second graders district wide scored well below benchmark compared to a smaller proportion of kindergarten and first grade. Highlighting some of the findings from MAP, which again, we'll look at in more detail in a in a visual form. In ELA, elementary students have similar levels of need district wide in grades three through six. But in math, it appears that their needs increase in higher grades. So you'll see that. There's more of that bottom of the distribution, more of the orange and red quintiles in math in the higher grades. But there are several schools that have grades whose performance was above the national average. So those are some groups with. A median percentile higher than the fiftieth percentile. So we'll see some of those. Actually, we we won't see individual schools grade by grade data. So I I don't think there's an example of that in this presentation. Sorry for the the error, but. The that is something we've seen as we've reviewed the school by school data. And in secondary, the median percentile, so that typical kid. Indicated a typical performance in math and ELA in that second lowest quintile, so below the national average in both subjects. And overall, in that distribution, as we'll see, the the lowest quintile, the bottom performing kids are overrepresented compared to the national. Population of students and the highest quintile is underrepresented. So not necessarily. Brand new trends, but this gives us a really different, a different and more specific language to think about. How William Penn achievement compares to the national averages and norms. All right, so we're going to dive into ELA data first. So again, this is a cadence. So this is our well below, below at benchmark and above benchmark. We see that there's an intense, there's a significant need for intensive support in ELA. Including half of first graders. So that was one of the things that I highlighted earlier. Remember, all of those students who are in that well below, that's intensive support according to Acadians. And I know that the next slide is actually our only. Our only slide tonight where we where we call out a specific school, because I do want to emphasize that. The district wide trends don't necessarily apply to every school. So this is Alden's Acadians reading results. Where we see both first and second grade show similar needs compared to the district where first grade looked like a hotspot. At Alden, well, I would say first and second grade would have to be equal priority, right? So. As we think about these trends on a district level, we're also supporting schools to think about what are their trends? What are their patterns? We can go to the next. So, okay, so now we're looking at MAP because we're in grades three through six now. So highlighting again, these are the five quintiles. A nationally typical school would have twenty percent in each. So we're overrepresented in that bottom fifth, that bottom quintile, and we're underrepresented in the top quintile of eightieth percentile or higher. But the middle categories are are pretty similar to national norms. And the, again, as I said before, in ELA, there's a similar pattern of need and current achievement in grades three through six. So this is comparing grades three through six overall at each individual school. At each individual elementary school. So this is just to show that the distribution of achievement and need really varies by school. So as I stated before, we are working with schools to understand their results and understand what trends are they seeing? So that they can respond to the detailed view that MAP is giving them of their students. So we see, you know, a range of schools like Alden and Evans, whose typical kid is very close to the national average. And a school, you know, Colwin is the only school where that top quintile is actually a little bit larger than national norms. And their their pattern of distribution is is different from the others. We can go, yep. Okay, so this is grade seven through twelve. Of course, we can, we know which which grades go with with which schools. As I said, these show similar levels of achievement and need in terms of that distribution. Where we're overrepresented in the bottom and underrepresented at the top. And that typical kid is somewhere between the thirtieth and thirty ninth percentile, so a bit below the national average. Right, so unpacking math a bit. In K through two district wide, there's also a significant need for intensive support in math with those well below benchmark students. Including about half of second graders district wide. And as I stated before, when we look at MAP results for three through six in math, we see the need. Increases a little bit as we go from grades three, four to five to six. Where once we get to sixth grade, half of our sixth graders are performing. In that bottom quintile, that bottom fifth of students nationally. This is showing that school to school comparison again. We see less schools at at the higher end than we do in in ELA, you know, that that fits the same pattern we saw as the previous slide. Of course, walnuts walnut sticks out as having a particularly low median percentile. That means the typical kid is starting significantly below average. And a lot of the other schools are hanging together pretty much. So this tells us that, you know. The the schools have a huge role to play in understanding the patterns within their grade levels. Which are going to be different from how the grade level patterns play out in the whole district. Right, so in seven through twelve here in math, again, we see similar levels of current achievement. And needs in terms of that distribution. So all of these. Different distributions look about the same in terms of where we're overrepresented and where we're underrepresented. All right, so I will pause there. I I would invite Octavia or. Or Ed to kind of talk to add anything else that I've missed about how we're supporting schools to kind of unpack this. This is where the driven by data methodology comes in. School teams have been working on seeing these assessment results, understanding the patterns and naming the patterns that. The data is presenting and then making action plans. That's what they're, they've been working on over the last. Don't have my calendar quite right, but over the last several weeks, I would say.
Heard there questions, Ms. Hall?
Uh, thank you, Ms. Cook Henry. I wonder, are we able to look at this data? Like based on how long they've been with the district? You know, the data follows them from school to school, I'm assuming.
So in the future, it will certainly follow them school to school. Yes, if there's a certainly from the elementaries to the middle and the high school, absolutely. And if even if they transfer, yes, it will all remain in the in the MAP system. But in terms of looking again at the data in terms of how long the students have been at William Penn. That is theoretically possible. It's not something. That MAP kind of provides out of the box. I guess I would wonder, what are we trying to find out by asking that question?
So. My thought has has been, so we get all, we have a high turnover rate. And a student comes to us, they come to us from all different circumstances at all different levels. And if we understood. You know, when a student came. Where they were on impact, we could remediate and help them right from there.
Yeah, so. I'll tell you about sort of two uses of the data that come to mind from that question. So one is. Although this is for, this is all data from the fall testing window. This is data that we'll use to look big picture from fall to winter. How are kids moving in different grades in different schools? It's also the case that anytime we get a new student, I think we're still working out the exact details and guidelines perhaps, but. Anytime we get a new student, we do have the option of giving them this assessment to kind of place them roughly. You know, against these these national norms. It doesn't have all the details as a student testing in the window, but it has some actionable information for that teacher. So that's one piece. Another is. But pardon, I'm sorry.
That was great to know. Thank you.
Yeah, so the other piece that comes to mind is, I think I hear in your question, kind of wondering like. How does this tell us how we're doing, right? How do these results tell us how we're doing? I think there's. There's, this isn't answering that question. As cleanly as we'll be able to in the future, because this is our first window doing it. MAP will only get more useful from here. This is the first time, you know, we're doing it grades three through eleven. Most kids, there are some high school kids who've who've taken it in the past, but most kids have a single data point on this assessment. When we start racking up multiple data points. This assessment allows us to answer questions like. Hmm, here's a school that targeted, you know, fifteen of their second graders for a certain kind of intervention. Did those fifteen kids grow in their scores from fall to winter? Did that plan of action seem to work? Here's a school that tried something new in fourth grade because they saw there was a lot of need in the fall. What does it look like in the winter? It allows those comparisons over time that get to the question of, you know, how are we doing? How are kids growing? So that's when the, you know. The the practical uses of the assessment really take off in our ability to look back at what we've done. And kind of reflect on how our efforts may or may not be working. Since we have a single term achievement, you know, you heard me talk a lot about it in terms of, these are the needs that exist. These are where the students are. You know, the different hotspots should guide what kind of interventions go where, but. When we start doing multiple windows, we can answer a host of other questions as well.
Great, thanks.
Mr. Tom?
Thank you, Ms. Cook Henry. So my question is. Do parents have like received some sort of? I guess update as to where their students fall within this continuum? And if they do, do they get some sort of recommendation on how they can help? To help their, you know, their little one at home while their teachers help them at school?
That's a great question. I do, I'm going to mostly toss it to my colleagues in academic services. I I can say that NWEA has a robust, like, you know, family report kind of function that. Teachers do have the option to, you know, print out and share. I I can't personally speak to the. Plans in place at different schools, but I'm sure my colleagues can add some more details there.
Yeah, good evening, everyone. Just to hop in a little bit. So Dr. Lewis is completely correct. So. One of the great features that we're really excited about from MAP is it does automatically generate a parent report that will. Not only tell their their students data in terms of a percentile performance and growth over time. But it's already printed out in like family friendly language that explains like all the pieces of data that we explained to you and. And all those things. So our thought. Uh, and all those things. So our thought process right now, uh, what schools are going to be doing is. Uh, as they had like their back to school nights and conferences, using this as another tool to share with parents. And integrating that into the context of the work that they're already doing with their students. So, for example, that may look different for different students at different buildings in terms of what the actual plan is. And what, you know, a school or a teacher would ask from a parent. But this data will help to explain the why, while still giving teachers that autonomy uh to make those recommendations.
Thank you, but I'm also looking for tips for, you know, hey, mom, your child is. You know, here's the report, they're missing in this, uh, they they fall here in the spectrum. Um, here's what you can do, you know, at home, read with them with these kinds of stories, you know, one liners, two liners, kind of a thing. To help them so they have something they can work with at home as well.
I understand. So the the data that that MAP gives uh both teachers. Well, more specifically, teachers, uh, there's a more like robust full. Uh, steam profile that can be printed out that has even more information. Um, I would recommend like a teacher sit down and talk to a parent about that. Uh, but the the part that they see will break it down and say like, for example, in math, is your student good at geometry or algebraic expressions or? Numbers and operations. And then where are they in that continuum and like what are the skills that they are ready to work on right now? Um, Matt does generate all that data. It doesn't natively come in the parent report because it is very. Uh, heavy from a an instructional lens standpoint, but a teacher definitely could use that information. Or share that information directly with a parent and to say, hey, based on what this data is saying, these are the types. Of activities to your point that you could do at home with your child. So it it's available. It just doesn't come natively with the family report. The family report is like just a very high level general explanation. We expect teachers to then use the more in-depth information they get the math to either share with parents or to integrate it into that student's uh learning plan.
Uh, thank you for that explanation. What I'm looking for is, you know, um. Families and teachers need to work together to help our 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 students is, I guess, you know, um. Some sort of resource for teachers then to pull that, you know. Piece of information so that we're consistent across the district in terms of the language and whatnot. Um, but a way to help parents who may not know how to help their child who are are struggling with the components that you described. You know, specifically, they may be doing things that are all helpful, but not hitting that particular element uh that they're struggling with. So that's really what I'm trying to help uh target for parents who may be struggling to help their child, but don't know how to help their child. Uh, because the the element that their 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 child is experiencing frustrations with isn't something that they're. Uh, they know how to address directly.
And some teachers will also add a narrative to their progress reports. And accompany these reports from both MAP and Acadians. That may give parents an insight on what they can do at home to support their student, their children. But it's not something from Acadians or Met, but some teachers are, I met with some teachers yesterday. During our professional development and they showed me some of the narratives that go home to show parents what they can do to support their child.
And and I'm looking for those kinds of narratives that, you know, can be consistent throughout the district. And then, you know, right now, we're we're asking the teachers to do a lot. And this is just another thing that if we could offload some of that that. Where we're, we're, you know, they just go to a database where they can find some of these things to pull up. And share with parents, because there's a lot of uh students that they, some of them have to deal with. You know, in elementary school, you got thirty kids in there. If you're um. Uh, a high schooler, you might have hundred and twenty kids or more that you have to deal with. So. You know, just thinking about their workload, not trying to give them too many things to review. But if they had something that they can pull to help parents. Address the the concerns that that these things are bringing up at home to help, you know, with the instruction in classroom.
So maybe like a a one pager where. Where kids are or where that particular class is um in math or. E L A or wherever they are, that maybe that. One pager, this is where we are as a class. These are some things that you can do as a. Parents, is that something that you're referencing, Jan?
Something to that effect, but you know, again, we each child is getting their own little um report and, you know. Uh, uh, the students may be struggling with R-controlled vowels. So what are some things that they can do with that? Um, and again, I don't want teachers to research a a ton of things. They they know how to do it, but. Something that we have that we can provide to parents, you know, here's something that you can do at home that can help with R-controlled vowels.
And while our interventions are not a direct correlation between our digital interventions, our um Dream Bob, Lexia and someone. Parents do have access to, or students have access to do those types of interventions at home where the data may not. Directly correlate and line up with what the assessment has shown the weak areas. But a lot of times those interventions are a very good starting point, which every student already has access to. At home and in school. So I think that's already a very good starting point. So we could enhance that list as well. I hear what you're saying, um, but. We do have at least that starting point with our digital interventions.
Uh, and I and I hear the the starting point with the digital interventions, but sometimes again, you know, the the students may, that 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 assumes the students. Doing the work. We want to have, again, I want to have something in this parent's hands that they can see. Um, so that they they know what they can do to help. Um, again, with with the digital um interventions. Again, parents may not be logging into their child's device to go to those things or know how to uh to find out where they're at. Uh, because if the kid doesn't show them, they can't get there. Uh, so these are just some things that, you know, I'm I'm trying to get our our parents who are, you know, maybe busy. Um, taking care of, you know, all the kids and running between things, something quick that they can look at. And and something quick that they can do to enhance their child's learning, that's all.
Thank you, Mr. Tom. Are there any other questions?
I had one, how are we um doing with deploying? Um, the supports that are needed. We saw that there are more needs in. Some grades than others. Um, you all have referenced. Um, working with uh teachers, um principals. Um, how are we deploying those resources? To make growth or to help growth between now and the next. Assessment.
Um, I will say on the E L A side, based off of the Acadians data, when we did Acadians for K through six. Last school year, we noticed um a deficit of phonemic awareness. So something we have purchased for the beginning of this school year and train teachers on is Hegarty. And Hegarty is a program most often used with the lower elementary grades. Um, so in both kindergarten and first grade, they are receive receiving Hegarty daily as a whole group instruction lesson. And grades two through five, most times do not participate in phonemic awareness because phonemic awareness is most times built in that. Those foundational grades, but we have purchased the Bridge to Gap program, which is also through Hegarty. Um, for those students that show um a deficit in phonemic awareness to support. A lot of the work that was lost during the pandemic. So that's one thing that we are excited to see that growth. For students from the beginning to the middle of the year.
Thank you. And then my last question is, seeing the. Opposite end of where students are doing extremely well, how are we encouraging? And promoting them to continue to excel?
So that's a great point. So, I'm sorry.
Now, go ahead.
No, and I was gonna say that was a, that's a great point. So one of the things that we are working with teachers and schools is through our. Uh, intellectual preparation process, which is the way that uh teachers collaboratively plan their unit. Is, uh, and we actually just had one district wide on Tuesday. Uh, where we have an service day where where teachers from across the district come and work with each other and they look at their data. And say like, hey, I'm about to teach a unit on X, Y, Z. Based on this data, what are the different levels that I have in my class? What are individual students need? And then how does my plan need to change as a result of that? Um, so based on that structure, not only are they able to say like, what are some of the interventions and scaffolds that I need to. Put in place to make sure that the content is accessible, they should also be doing that for their students that are excelling to say. Hey, what are some extension activities? What are some projects and things uh that I I can make available? That are aligned to this unit in this content. And the great thing about a a test like MAP or Acadians is you know who those kids are. So when we do either small group instruction or center work or any form of differentiation, not only do we. Uh, have the time that we put in place from a planning perspective to plan and share those ideas. But we also know who those kids are, where that's going to be just right for them. So that that's the idea. And then, you know, obviously it's a continual coaching uh from, you know, all of our instructional facilitators and school-based teacher leaders and admin. At different levels to help support teachers in that work, but also their colleagues, because they get a chance to interact with each other as well.
Thank you. Seeing that there are no um additional questions, I want to thank you all. This for the presentation. The information shared this evening gives us a lot of. Pause and for me, it's excitement um to know that we are on track with. Um, meeting that obligation to have standard assessments within our district. So that we can support students as needed. So I'm excited. About um the presentation this evening and looking forward to um the ongoing work that's happening. And then again, thank you everyone for your participation in our meeting. Have a great evening.
Thank you, academic services. Thank you, Ms. Cook Henry.
You're welcome. Good night.